I'd like to call the meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District's School Committee to order, and we'll start with the Pledgeable Elegance. Pledgeable Elegance.
To the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I would like to announce that our meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with the Templeton Community TV, TCTV, and those recordings are provided to Templeton and Houston Cable Access TV. I always like to give a plug, it's out on YouTube, there's a channel, it's on Facebook, so please go find the videos and see what's happening, not just with the school, but also with the community. We're just gonna mix things up and change our agenda just a little bit, we do have some presenters today, and we're gonna allow them to do the presentation first, and then we'll come back and start with the minutes and go through our agendas, so I will turn it over to Dr. Casvan to introduce our presenters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce you to Mrs. Kathy Wallace and Mr. Jason Donovan, who run our Life Skills Program, and I promised I wouldn't go too far into that because I would be taking away some of the, you know, some of the information. So, I will tell you that they do a wonderful job, the students that they serve, the skills that they teach are invaluable, and they are truly integrated into our district, into our culture, and not just on our periphery either. They, they really do a wonderful job, you know, including our children. And so, with that, I'd like to turn it over to, I'm not sure who's gonna talk first. Oh, Melissa's gonna talk first, so there we go.
Well, thanks for coming, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you. So, our PowerPoint's up on the screen, if we had time, we have some really nice photos. I'm gonna bore you first with some reading, and after that, I promise you'll enjoy it with lots of photos. So, it's important for you to understand what, who our students are. So, our Life Skills Program tries to develop and refine independent academic vocational daily living and communication skills to prepare students as they graduate from high school. We have classes that address vocational training and academic instruction. We serve students ages 14 to 18, while a postgraduate life skills class is designed for students ages 18 to 22. Students have a plethora of job placement opportunities to help them determine their strengths and interests related to future employment. This is complemented with functional academics to foster future independence of productivity. Our students, so our students, the Life Skills Program is designed to address the needs of students with severe disabilities in the areas of cognition, socialization, and communication. They have lower cognitive abilities, they require significant support with academics, social communication, and life skills. They require functional academics. Often, the students require support from speech, occupational, and/or physical therapists. They require curriculum focused on activities of daily living, and they may have challenges in the area of fine or gross motor, self-help, vision, hearing, executive functioning, attention, and self advocacy skills. So, what is our day look in the Life Skills Program? We start every morning with a roundtable morning meeting. So, how we hold our morning meetings is just like a business meeting, because remember, we're getting these kids ready for employment. So, we have some behavioral expectations for the kids to focus on the speaker, good eye contact, body posture, and be respectful for those that are speaking. We go over our daily, the date, our daily calendar, current events, weather, things like that. But we also discuss some strong topics, you know, we do a lot of social skills, we talk about, we do a lot of decision-making and problem-solving. Kids come back from being out in their vocation, and we ask them, "How are things going?" And they might say, "You know, I'm having a little trouble here." So, we problem-solve as a team, what could they do differently, and work together, and things like that. We also invite guests, if we're doing some form of a party, we have that, right, the scene of breakfast, and we have some guests in, and we do planning with them. We have our speech therapist comes in every Friday morning to work with the kids on, you know, how to introduce themselves, how to agree with each other. So, it's a place we just like to start our morning, check in, see how everybody's feeling, and a good way to start the morning, and cover all kinds of things.
Just to add a little, that, everybody likes structure and routine, and these students are no different, just like we all do, whether you get your coffee in the morning, what time you get up, they like to make everything routine as possible, so that they know what their day or their week is ahead of them, don't we all like that? You know, so they're no different than any of that. The fun part is inviting guests, like Ms. Wallace talks about, having somebody else come in and talk, to have them have an opportunity, maybe to ask a question, or for us to help them ask a question, to try to gain that knowledge as they get into the community, that's the goal, get them involved, so that they see some faces that they don't recognize, and they're gonna have to have some life skills to do that.
Yeah, and Monday mornings is their favorite, because they get to talk about what they did during the weekend, but everybody has to ask questions. They love talking about themselves. Anyways, so you heard that we work with functional academics and living skills, so that involves so much. We have, in our classroom, we put together last year, 75 interactive simulations, which covers anywhere from grocery shopping, budgeting, reading schedules, working on time, working on money, there's 75 different simulations, that's all I can say, so a lot to cover. We also work on living skills, so we work on hygiene, we have a hygiene station, we work on cooking, but cooking is just not, let's go cook this elaborate meal, we've learned cooking tools, we use the simulations to learn how to follow directions, and then go to actually cook the meal.
Yeah, budgeting, you know, you have to budget when you cook the meals, to go shopping, all of that, it's like a, your own family at home, we try and bring that into the school day, what, what do you have to do, where do we have to go, what day are we planning this, it can't be just a spur-of-the-moment thing, how much money do we have, you know, all those things that high school kids are trying to get involved in, or maybe they're not, these students need that, they need that structure of what to do, and the safety of knowing that there are adults there to support them. And each kid, they work at their own level, okay, so we try and structure it, like Ms. Wallace said, the different simulations, who can do what? So, if a kid's stuck on one, we can move to another, we can split groups, we can mix and match groups, which is the nice thing about having that class.
Every moment of their day is a learning experience, so if we're gonna take them out to lunch, they need to look at the menu, they pre-order, bring their own money, budget that way. Same thing with grocery shopping, we bring in the ads, and we go through the ads, and we make a shopping list. Anyway, these are some photos of them doing the functional academics, there's an intern there, we do have interns that come in and work with the students, they make macaroni cheese, and I'll just go through that, learning how to set a table, make big grease for whatever type of breakfast. We made sandwiches one day, invited other students in, and we had, we had some staff members in for lunch, and they served them lunch, and we leave, mama on top of the other leaf, and they get to communicate with each other. There's our hygiene area, you gotta love it. But it's so important. We also bring in the arts and science experiments each day, and I'll go through this, so, right, another intern looking at this, they're thinking of pumpkins and planting seeds and prediction, and then they pumpkin pie, what are they doing there, march pod or something?
Yeah, seasonal things, Halloween.
Yeah, and we're doing a few of those, and here we got planting seeds, so they planted their own herbs that we cook, use for cooking. Fitness.
Yeah, so fitness, warrior wellness, you know, just trying to keep the mind and body strong, also, also known as yoga, you know, once a week, twice a week, and kids love it, you know, they enjoy doing it, and it's, it's important to build stamina too, you know, maybe they're not getting as much exercise other places, so if school was part of that day, you can build that into their day, along with gym class and other things, and you can always see the difference once they do the yoga, and the warrior wellness after, how they feel, much better. Outside projects during the fall, collecting leaves, you know, learning about some science that way, hiking on the trails, doing scavenger hunts out there, you know, anybody that knows the place, you know, we take advantage of every part of the property, it's a, it's a great spot to, to hike and, and go around, and build in dirt, a lot of the, that's special Olympics have, you know, everybody's involved, everybody's doing it, having fun, it's a great day. Just some more photos.
So, community service is really big in our program, we usually do some form of community service monthly. So, this year, we did the Be Like Britt, I don't know if you've ever heard of it, but it's an orphanage down in Haiti that houses 66 orphans, it was a local family that built it in memory of their daughter that passed away in the earthquake 10 years ago. So, we spoke to the owner, Mrs. Gangel, and there's Brittany with the orphans, their daughter, we spoke to Mrs. Gangel to say, "What is it that the orphanage could use if we raised money?" And she said, "You know, the kids, none of the staff or anyone has computers." So, it's like, well, here, at our school, we use Chromebooks, and they're a lot less expensive, so there's a picture of her, she went out and bought Chromebooks, we raised $1,300, we baked pumpkin and almond breads for $10, and sold them to staff, to community members, and Mrs. Gangel went out to get Chromebooks, she also joined us in baking, so there she is with the students.
So, giving back, not only to the community, but worldwide now, you know, it's very important to teach that, how to give back, that's one of the hardest things to teach teenagers, is that, give of yourself, don't expect anything in return, but starting that, and I talked about earlier, planting a seed, you know, try to, maybe down the line, they'll do it on their own, or they'll explore more, but that's, as educators, that's important to us, so not only, like I said, we do it in the community, but now we're out there everywhere.
So, now we did another one, and this is last March, for the Massachusetts Down Syndrome Congress, we baked goods every Friday and sold those, and they raised $317, they received, you know, a nice thank you letter, and a banner that hangs up in our classroom, so this is Ally pulling squares out of the oven, this is each Friday. Chad did a lot of the job, recording all the orders, making deliveries, collecting money, this is Des on Grace St. Patrick's delivering, she would put tray, the platters on her tray and deliver that, and here they got the little made-up banner, and then we had a real fan, so we're so excited.
Yeah, and then just more kind of worldwide fundraising, kids in need, we collected small toys, built shoeboxes, and then mailed around the world.
And here they got some.
And there's some pictures of that, all the donations, and the staff are wonderful in getting on board with that, you know, sending out emails, and the kids seeing the emails, responding to them, and then having that huge role in that, rather than Ms. Wallace and myself just going around banging on doors, it's up to them, like, this is what we're gonna do, and we're gonna help facilitate that. So, we've done stockings for veterans, stockings for homeless, Valentine's for veterans, we just did this week, so, you know, just some pictures of them really getting involved, and happy to do that, you know, oops, oops.
I didn't go too far, sorry.
No, it's okay.
So, field trips. So, we do field trips, we talked about, we go grocery shopping after we've made our grocery list, we go out to lunch, this is at the...
That's Price Shopper, and that is the Spalding Station, something right there.
I remember, we go out to breakfast there often, it's wonderful, we went to the Butterfly Place last year, we thought to...
Those are Christmas trees in Gardner.
Yeah, that was fun, a lot of that Christmas tree was... So, that's us, internships and vocations.
Yeah, and the other part is the age, you know, you get to that 18-years-old, and you're trying to figure out what they can do, if they can stay with us for another 40 years, if they so choose, and so just getting them involved in internships on campus, and then eventually off, so you're teaching everything from, again, time management, holding a job, to being on time, to how you dress, to all the hygiene that is involved in that, and then actually having a rating system for them, so they can follow it, again, to their ability, and what you can teach, so important skills to have for them, and then going over their vocational progress, weekly, bi-weekly, monthly, and it is, it's a lot for them sometimes to digest, but over time, if you keep going at it, then they start to realize, hey, this is, this is what I have to do, and they're the best at correcting someone else when they don't do it right, they are fantastic, you know, whether it's wearing a half the building, or being on time, if you're late, they'll let you know, if I'm late, they'll let me know, dude, you're late, you know, they know that.
Yeah, so we have Des, Des works at the Templeton Elementary School, and she did a complete PowerPoint to the school staff there, in what her role could be, so then they would sign her up as far as what they want, would like her assistance with. And here is Des, so, it's work in progress for Des this year, being over there, and what I mean by that, it takes a whole team, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and assistive technology. So, Des will come back, and it's like, you know, the kids can't hear me, so we audit her microphone. She does warrior wellness, she shows them the positions on her PowerPoint, she can do sight words with them, so there's different opportunities, but because of assistive technology, coordinating with the full team, she's being productive and independent.
So, it's wrapping their skills around what we, how we can help them, you know, that frame, they, they have skills, we have to figure out where they are, they have to know where they are, and then we try and frame what we can to help them, assistive technology is tremendous, what we're, what we can do.
And this student sent out a flyer last year, cleaning services, so people email her, and what they would like cleaned, here's a picture of her, we have students going out to the pamper and parlor in Gardner, if anyone's familiar with that, and their work list, and you'll see them in action, and see what they're doing.
And next step is answering phones over there, which is huge, but it's, the young lady's very capable.
And then Templeton Senior Center.
Yeah, back in the community, you know, sweeping, mopping, doing things, you know, to give back, you know, and they're gonna be part of this community, and that's important, so they got to know some of the, some of the people that hang out there, and they love these guys, when they go over there, they see us, they're happy to see us, and they work really hard to, you know, to their best...
That's actually Ally down at the central office, I think she, when she was done with vacuuming, the whole cord was like totally wrapped around her, and she was like on the floor. Vacuuming, the vacuum's bigger than she is.
So, before we get into that, just let me say too, we've started maybe older kids, and now, you can see like two kids working, that's that mentorship of an older student, and then the next student coming in together, showing, you know, these are the jobs we have to do, which is really good, so they can pass it on, so when that one student leaves, the next student's gonna step up, and it'll be that leader, and kind of show the next person.
And we have example, a great example of that, in recycling, so other internships to recycling classroom aids, raising the lower flag every day, deliveries and teaching supplies, shredding, OT and PT assistance, and period leadership, and this is where, well, not necessarily that one, but right here, so older student who's gonna be 22, younger student that's 15, doing recycling, and they are so great together.
Yeah, sure, transition.
Well, I can, yeah, so real quick, transition plan 688, Jason's gonna go into that, but we send out a PowerPoint to parents and other staff members exactly what that means, I think that's what that, like, it's, that...
So, students with disabilities in Massachusetts, access to adult services through 688, the 680-year program process, that's a two-year coordinated plan for students who entitlements and special ed services will end when they graduate from school or turn 22, excuse me, years of age, that's the magic number, 22, when their adult services will start. To be eligible, first receiving special ed services paid for by Commonwealth, and continuing adult services at the time of graduation, returning 22 due to the severity of disability, unable to work competitively without supports for more than 20 hours a week, and a student is automatically eligible when they receive SSI or SDI, and they are registered with the Mass Commission for flying.
So, with that being said, there's a lot of work at meetings on those.
Yeah, so these are all, these are different referrals and different agencies, so the meetings for my students in the last couple of years have brought in DDS, and starting to develop that relationship with them, which is important, because over time, they can see what they're, where they can be placed, you know, there's ideas of group homes, assisted living, working, you know, if they feel like you work, and that's a plan we can coordinate with them, just anything that the student, once they turn that 22, become an adult, they get that service, so when they leave here, the next day, that starts, there's no gap in, in the coverage or them having that assistance. Parents become involved with that process also, and they start to visit some programs outside of here, it could just be as, as simple as something like we do already, but it's a date, it's a date house, where they go, and it's just older, you know, 22 and up, where they go daily, and so they'll do jobs, or, you know, learn crafts, or whatever they're gonna do, so it's important to have that connection when they leave, and we start that at 18, and it continues on for those years, there's a couple of kids that are gonna be up this year, will be leaving, they have a, they have a plan in place that, you know, looks pretty good, and we're pretty happy with it, we'll miss them, but know that they're becoming good hands for adult services when, when they leave there.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Yeah, I think, you know, they're a great group of students, they're integrated into this community, and I know the students here, they know them, and they see them, and they're, they're, they're very happy, and they love coming to school every day, disappointed when we have snow days and things like that, right? So, which is, which is...
Our kids are actually disappointed in this.
And they, and they fit in well here, and we appreciate all the support that we get from all the staff here with them.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much. Thank you, that is wonderful. Any, any questions or comments for those?
Yeah, also, if you wanna come by anytime to see the classroom, stop in for a visit, you know, or I'm...
Where are you located now?
I'm still in the middle of the way in the back room.
What used to be the home ec area?
Yeah, yeah, so anytime, yeah, but anytime, we'd love to have you, and these guys...
I think we know where they have home ec on that day.
Everybody loves eating some sweeters, right? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job.
Yes.
Yep.
You know, just, well, back up, but when you are in need of assistance, which many of our students are, it's important for them to learn, to feel, you know, that they, that they are part of something, that they can assist, they do a fantastic job, especially with the mentoring program and in other areas, to feel a sense of worth, and to be able to give back, and I think, you know, all those things that you saw today, they do exactly that, and that is immeasurable, immeasurable, they do a fantastic job. So, I guess we have to get back to business.
It's also valuable for the whole community, for them to see that component as well, but there's, that can't be...
So, when Desiree was with her, with her kids, she says to mine up, they mine up, and there is no question, and I'm looking at some of my TC folks, the point is that they're not looking at the wheelchair, they're not looking at the assistive technology, they're looking at the 19, or the adult in the room, and that is a very important piece to that, and so you have kids who understand that authority, if you, if you so, can look, look differently in many ways, and if you've ever seen her down, working with the kids, it's honestly, it's worth 100 bad days, we can guarantee that.
Nice, that's great. Yeah, if we can get that posted out on the website, maybe for the community to see, it's perfect. Thank you. All right, I guess back to regular business, we have two sets of minutes from our January 14th regular meeting, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes when someone's ready to do so.
So moved.
I do have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second, so this is to approve the meeting minutes of January 14th. Anyone question, comments, anyone need more time to look through them? Okay, see, no one's raising their hand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, so that passes.
I abstain.
Okay, we have one abst- abstination.
Good word.
Okay, so we do not pass unanimously. And the second set of minutes is for the February 4th meeting, that included our informational budget presentation, when someone is ready to make a motion, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Do I have a second to approve the minutes of the February 4th meeting? Anyone need additional time, or have any questions or comments on these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I abstain.
Abstained, and that passes. Next up is our bills and payrolls, I would take a motion to recommend to accept the bills and payroll warrants as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that passes unanimously. Okay, our next appearance will be from our student representatives, who will give their report.
Yeah, so, the entire district is currently gearing up for February break next week.
Exciting stuff. In the high school, three high school students are going to the state track competition this Saturday at the Reggie Lewis Track and Field Center in Boston.
The boys varsity basketball team drew the first seed slot at the Clark Tournament.
The boys basketball team also held a successful fundraising night at the 99.
Currently, the class of 2021, the juniors, they're selling Valentine's Day carnation flowers as a fundraiser.
The girls basketball team helped their, played for the Cure game last night.
Currently, the National Honor Society and the Middle School Honor Society are sponsoring a shoe drive that's going on until February 27th, there's a bucket right there out there in the lobby, if you wanna donate some shoes.
The theater and drama programs are preparing for the musical, Mary Poppins, and for the festival competition play.
At the middle school and high school level, the ski club is going strong right now, despite some heavy rain and the impending spring.
March money calendars are on sale by the 8th grade in order to fundraise for the Washington DC trip.
And 7th graders are thinking about their nature's classroom trip later this spring.
In the elementary school, Valentine's Day celebrations are gonna be occurring this Friday, February 14th.
And as well as the 100th day of school celebrations, so that's probably going to be tomorrow, but it also might be Friday.
Whether or not. And on behalf of all the students, we would like to thank all the custodial and maintenance staff, district-wide, for keeping our parking lots and walkways safe and clear in a timely matter, also, thank you Dr. Casvan for thinking about student safety and allowing me to sleep in.
And why, and why is that, because there's a...
Two hours.
Two hours later tomorrow.
Oh, he already called?
Um, could you just give a little more information, so people don't show up with brand-new pairs of shoes?
Ah, okay, so, the National Honor Society is sponsoring a shoe drive through the company Soles for Soles, and they take new or lightly worn shoes, and they take these shoes, refurbish them, and harvest their parts, and then with these shoe parts, they ship them to developing nations for small businesses and entrepreneurs to kind of resell and grow their business, and make it economically and environmentally sustainable.
Is this just sneakers, or all types of things?
Anything except Crocs, basically, nothing rubber.
And there's collection buckets in the high school?
And the middle school lobbies.
So, if anyone wants to donate, they can come and ring the buzzer and say, "I have shoes," and...
Yes, also, I recommend donating in the form of trash bags to carry your shoes, because they're kinda hefty, yeah.
Just a suggestion, and we do have walking hours still, so if anybody's interested in dropping shoes off, it's open, they can drop them off.
And what are, what are the hours that we do walking?
4:30 to 7:30.
4:30, yeah, so, good, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for student reps? Well, thank you, nice report. All right, public input, if anyone would like to come up, I just ask that you come to the microphone, state your name, what town you're from, and try to limit your presentation to three minutes, is there anyone in the public who would like to come down and speak?
I'm just gonna give you a quick update, Anne Lyons, driving director for the high school, on February 28th, we are having our final dress rehearsal, let's open to the public, for our M.E.T.G. festival presentation, the kids go to the 29th and down to the Lummester, so if you guys are more than welcome to come, we're just asking people who are gonna come, instead of paying admission, we're asking for non-perishable good items for the government school camp.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock on the 28th.
On the 28th, yes, they will do our final dress rehearsal Friday night, and then they, they go to Lummester on Saturday.
That's great. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come and speak?
I haven't been up to keep you.
Sure. We were beginning to miss you.
This is 20 already. As it's all still fresh in our minds, we welcome you to join town meetings last year, and the 29th budget number, I did wanna thank this committee, the students, for remembering as long as they did, trying to support the students' true needs. I just wanted to point out, that if you and you the same 200 no votes in the voting tie, while as word got out, the yes votes grew to double, and we almost had it at the end, but most of the parents of the districts seem to be not aware of the true importance of voting. Please also note that the noes rarely ever come to these early meetings to support their position, because they just know they can come at the end to the polls and vote no. You're now talking about permanently closing our open schools. In budget time several years ago, it was already said that there was no bat left to cut, and you'd be digging into the muscle and bone, meaning teaching the books. Now you're talking about amputating an entire limb, and a healthy one in the back. Closing pillars and memorials that you take out when another budget battle is a very drastic step, and one that could not ever be easily reversed. It's like the old joke about wrecking your truck to get the insurance money to make your truck payment, but then how are you gonna get to work? This is a short, simple solution. This is a short sighted solution for the district and it's not funny at all. This would make the fifth elementary school that Templeton has forced to close through neglect or choice. But the difference is, we are not West Templeton. We are a separate town and should not be solely their decision. I've been glad to see all the progress they've made, choices, the responsibility. But however, their choosing a flat number of schedule which they comfortably make work has meant cuts this school year and now seems to be already dropping the bar unacceptably over in here. Last year, many Templeton parents did speak out on Facebook saying that Dr. Casman has been the most upfront and most transparent to pretend that they've seen this district. But they still refuse to accept and support his budget of what he needed to run the school safely and effectively. It keeps coming back to whether what was enough for them as children should be enough now. We all know that is not the case. Needs and costs have skyrocketed and the towns have to make it work. He also said that he couldn't run this district with one elementary building. And now in Town Templeton, students is even higher and still growing. That building may seem big, but it already has its limits. Even if your fifth grade moves out, that takes about a hundred students out. But if you move in, all of Phillips and Memorial puts back about the same amount. That is not leaving any room for future growths. Phillips is a separate town. We should be given a fair opportunity to vote to save our school. Other operating scenarios have worked well in the past, such as a part-time shared principal with a lead teacher on site. Other funding formulas such as each town paying for its own elementary schools operation, as I mentioned last year, should be presented to the voters before deciding to close. The Templeton, so I quote, advisory committees have said in recent meetings they are discussing these options too. The regional agreement needs to be updated anyway for their lease issue. Let us work together to please see what can be done before throwing in the towel. I'm angry that our choice can still be taken away. Many people are moved to Phillips and because of this fall school and all it offers, forcing our students to be bussed out of town because someone else won't pay their bills goes against our rights and parents to shape our children's future. I'm frustrated that nothing said, voted, or done has helped. Phillips has resisted utilizing our elementary students for fifty years now. In a town survey last year, ninety percent of respondents said they do not support urging and would want the town to take action to prevent it, such as running it completed by ourselves or with another town. The major concerns included class sizes, long bus rides, access to the building for after-school groups, and loss of personal connection to the community. Again, I would support splitting the town's assessment into two parts, to cover the elementary school in full and then pay for students from middle and high school. But we need the numbers and the opportunity to vote on it. I'm aware this is the major turning point in the entire cultural budget of our town because the rest of our children will never know the difference PMS has made for all prior students. And only ancillary after-school activities such as scouts would be greatly affected as well. Our traditional Halloween parade, holiday concert, and memorial program with all our veterans are important family events here, including two or three generations. And in reality, those are the types of things children can remember, not every individual person. Above all, I'm disappointed and sad that the voters of our partner town simply didn't care, even after all the times Phillips and you have bent over backwards to help their children whenever they would need. For decades, we housed and educated all the students with special needs because Templeton refused to obtain any of their buildings to accommodate them at no cost. We welcomed and educated TC and Golden Milkers when they were building safety issues several times, again, at no cost. We hosted extended day and summer school with our wonderful new playground for the last few summers at no expense. We have supported every override asked for and have been a partner in this district since the beginning. Now it seems for the longer pick than we are. But we still deserve a voice and a chance to keep what we value most, our children, close to home. Please start the process of updating regional agreement as soon as possible so both towns can try to get what they want for the little bit back to our students as possible.
Any other comments? Seeing none. NDEA, this is Parker's here.
I think James and I'm not pretty much. I'm just hoping every time around. We'll wait next week, so everybody come back healthy and wait us to combine. And that's coming up soon, so we're gonna keep going.
Right, the business manager's report. I'll turn it over to Ms. Baster.
Honestly, there's so much going on in my office, I don't even really know what's on these reports this month. I put them together quite a while ago because I had other things to focus on. So I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, if there's any questions that you want to ask me.
They don't look too much different than prior.
Yeah, no.
That I've noticed. Does anyone have any questions on, you know, we're still running in the red in the two places we were and we talked about, we're going to wait to see how that.
Yeah.
If it's driven, how that shakes over the next couple of months. Anybody have any questions? I will channel my, and Mrs. Trifilo, the grants, everything's trending as expected with the grants. Anybody having any questions? So we'll jump into the next topic, which is the FY twenty-one budget. We had met on the fourth and had an informational hearing to present where we were with, with level service and what the numbers looked like. And knowing that that increase probably is not sustainable. Would the next year and years after, and the towns, would you be able to absorb that type of increase? We had asked Dr. Casman to come back with his mighty staff numbers and come up with a scenario that looked at what would it mean based on his initial recommendations to look at changing the configuration of the district so we could see what those numbers looked like. So I will turn it over to you to introduce. Well, I think you can share with us.
Great. So again, kind of going over the same old ground from last, last week. The proposal, you know, as we talked about when we first initially just went to a date, as his budget was well over twenty million dollars. We talked about the fact that towns have spoken, certainly in November, and both, you know, agreed that they would not support a large increase in the school budget. We talked about this district reconfiguration, which would allow us to continue to move, you know, ahead academically in terms of equity and not only in staff, but in service. You know, we talked about the, you know, being academically sound and much needed addition, key social emotional staff. We, we were not able to have the staff that we needed last, last budget cycle, which again, you know, just ended a mirror four months ago, seems like yesterday. And that, you know, again, our inability to meet needs of some of our students is driving the cost of special education, especially in terms of our out of district placements. And so that's, that's recapping, of course, what we, what we discussed last week. So as we always do, when we, when we start looking at budgets, we take it step by step. So what do we do? We reassigned all grades K through four students at Phillips into Templeton Elementary. We reassigned all district fifth graders to students at the middle school, and then we hit a hard stop. We could not go much further than that because when we started plugging it into the schedule, which like, for example, last year was a seven drop one or two, we quickly found out that we were going to, we'd be required to hire three additional unified arts staff just to make the schedule work at the middle school as well as, you know, because when we started talking about unified arts and we had to take it from the high schools, those are blocks of time, or those are instructional blocks that are coming away from the high school. Because we have four grades at the element, pardon me, at the middle school, you have two grades off at the same time, which, you know, anywhere between ten or eleven or twelve staff in order, you know, in order to handle that and, or blocks of time, not just staff, but in terms of blocks of time. Well, our numbers are increasing, so those numbers are going up. So we, we hit, we hit a wall pretty quickly once we plugged everything into the schedule. Then we started to think, we thought about things a little bit differently. And we, given the same two factors, we reassigned the eighth grade to the high school. And I would like to take credit for this. It certainly wasn't my idea, as I said earlier, that my job is to hire people a lot smarter than me, and I've done that. So I guess that's my superpower. But when we reassigned the eighth grade to the high school, it started to open up a lot more possibilities. One, and we're going to get to that, but frank, quite frankly, and almost simplistically, what it did is when you are part of the high school, you do not go on your common plan kind of for your prep. As a group, you go as a content area. So you might, you know, eighth, I'll get to this, but eighth grade English is going on, but the eighth grade math teacher is on, on planning or, or on prep. So it, it opens up all these possibilities. So when we started to do that, things started to move a little bit. Well, it moved quite a bit, and I'll get to that. No matter what we do, no matter what scenario, there are going to be staff cuts. When I finally, when we finally get to the numbers of things, it will require one administrative cut, six teaching positions district wide, one secretary position, and one part-time custodian, at least in the initial way. I have to tell you that, you know, the cuts itself never really, they haven't changed much, right? In terms of the sheer numbers of things. But it seemed ironic that if we would have gone to the original plan, we'd be hiring and cutting all at the same time. Certainly, that doesn't make any sense. So moving forward, we talk, what does this do for us? Well, first off, the eighth grade will be physically located at the middle school as they are right now. For those of you who are, you know, keen to where exactly the eighth grade live, of course, my, my frame of reference is only the last couple of years. So they're currently where they used to be, but I call it the fifth grade hallway. Whether they're in, whether in that hallway or they're in the TC hallway, see my frame of reference, they're going to be on this side of the, of the middle school doors. They're not, they're not going to move them on the other side. But just, just remember that when we had TC here, they were on the other side. They technically were in the high school. They were down the, down the hallway near the, well, what are now the math classrooms. Eighth grade students will still receive instruction from the eighth grade team. That will not change. You're not going to have a twelfth grader with an eighth grader. It's not how it's going to happen. Again, they will stay contained. Will they have unified arts with high school unified arts teachers? Yes, that will happen. Because remember, they're on the high schools, on the high school schedule, okay? They will, will be able to more effectively utilize the middle and high school workforce. We're, we're kind of trapped in a schedule where we work, we have staff members, we have staff or services provided because we couldn't do anything else because we were technically, quote unquote, landlocked. This opens up a lot more possibilities and, you know, we'll try to get to that later, but first was to do. But it only requires hiring one additional teacher, which is the, which would be a unified arts. We have, we still have to hire one unified arts teacher because you still are bringing up more kids. But we, when you think about, when you think of what the alternative was, three, and taking back fifteen teaching blocks from the high school, that was problematic, right? So now we actually reduce the number of blocks of time that will be utilized from the high school and again, we would hire, need to hire a unified arts teacher. It prevents the middle school from having to administer four MCAS tests. I know that in a way that, that kind of goes unseen. Folks, this is all done online, you know, and to administer four at one point is, it's probably, it's hard to do with three. Four would be very hard and it would stress really kind of our resources. But I did throw that out there in there because it's something we would have to worry about. So again, for those of you who are familiar with the schedule, et cetera, the, the schedule basically stays the same. Shared high school blocks would be one, two, was it five total blocks only? Shared high school, that would mean for unified arts. So someone would, would, you know, have to cover, you know, two grade five unified arts, two grade six, and two grade seven somewhere in the schedule. And that's a heck of a lot better than we have now. And if we had to go back to the old schedule, where it was somewhere in the area of twelve to fifteen, if not more. So benefits to the district. Moves three positions to the general fund from school choice. I have heard many times that nobody, we don't want school choice. It's, it costs us more money. Okay, great. No school choice. We're going to have to make moves in order to be less dependent on school choice. If we are still going to have to utilize as much school choice money as we do for operating costs, then I'm going to have to still take in school choice kids to keep a certain balance. This is really the beginning of, you know, alleviating some of that, of that need. It adds the second nurse back to Templeton Elementary. We need to do that. By, what that means though, just to be clear, that's the nursing position from Phillipsden moving full time up to Templeton Elementary. That's not adding another nurse, just so we're clear. Add the additional custodian to T E S, same thing. Custodian from Phillipsden will be moved up to T E S. You know, it's a large building, a lot, I mean, a lot of kids. It needs the care and maintenance, folks, it does. Adds a middle school unified arts teacher. You know, again, we are a school. We are still trying to academically push forward. And this gives us opportunity to maybe, I don't know, offer a foreign language, which most middle schools do. The middle school will be less dependent on the high school. Every block, instructional block we take from the high school, when I say create, the middle school takes, it's one less option for the high school. It, it starts to limit the, our ability instructurally. More course offerings available for high school students, which that goes hand in hand. More course offerings, more either electives or actual courses themselves, core courses, et cetera. Lessens the dependency on school choice ones. We've talked about that. Adds equity, equitable services for all elementary students. I know that folks, when they worry about money, they don't think this way. I'm going to say that we are not equitable at this point in time. We're not. We do not offer the same services to all of our elementary students because we do not have the staff to do it. We are split, we are pulled too, we're stretched too thin, mostly in the social emotional area. Intensive special needs teacher is definitely going to be hired. It's been posted. That has to happen, you know, in terms of an IEP. We, we have, we're going to have to hire, from my perspective, another school psychologist. If you don't care anything about kids and you care only about money, you'd want that to happen. We're trying to keep kids in the district, right? Trying to create programming that we, that we can, they're about here because we want to keep them here. This is where they live, right? That's, that's my perspective. But if they're only worried about the dollar, that these moves help stay off the cost of just simply just shipping them out to be a collaborative or to a residential. Of course, it supports continued academic growth, which is our focus. And we see it. So the monies. This is a two point five five, I want to make sure that we're, you know, being exact, percent increase over last year. Given everything that, not only that we've been through and what we cut technically in November, just technically, and what we moved in for, you know, you're anywhere between nine, nine staff members, I think, and, I don't know, positions, over twelve positions, grand total, no, thirteen positions total. So, so the fact of the matter is that over the past X amount of months, we have reduced our, I'll call it overhead, but mostly through staff positions. Why? Because schools are staff intensive. We don't build rigids. So the fact is that when you look at this and you look at these percentages, we, we got down to that two point five percent increase which, over last year, which we feel is, well, I say doable, given all the other factors that we've talked about. I know that folks, I think I'll just go right to the big slide because I think it's probably easier to see. So that would be the town assessment. So, you know, a lot of, a lot of talk is about town assessments. What is it going to cost the town of Templeton, town of Phillipsden, et cetera? If you remember last week, and it's on tape, I, again, I don't want to commit it to memory, but it was somewhere close to an eleven percent increase, I believe, for Templeton. It was, it was, it was seven for Phillipsden. We stopped. If you remember the presentation, I, we just simply stopped at that moment. We knew at that point that that was not going to be sustainable. And then we started to think about other ways. So how I broke this down, sorry. How it is, how do things look? Well, I have to explain something real quick. I had to graduate all the kids. So I'm looking at moving, moving everybody up. So pre K and K, I never know what we're going to have until we actually have them in seats. I simply just took the number of pre K and K that I have in December, and I applied that to this. That's why I made it that funky blue color. And then I graduated everybody one grade. Kindergarten came first grade, first grade, you get it, all right? So I graduated everybody up using the exact numbers. This does not take into account anybody moving in. This is exactly how many bodies we had in December, okay? Because it was the closest, the best information that I had at the time, or the most recent. Well, of course, we use the same numbers, folks. You clearly know that the number of kids are not going to go up. It was pretty static. Six fifty-four is the current total and six fifty-one would be the projected total, projected. If kids move in, then that number, of course, is going to go up. But again, it would be my recommendation, and I don't see any way that you could take school choice at any level all the way up through. We talked about that last week. So literally, this would be your residence, these would be residents. If anybody, if these numbers went up, they would be residents. You're talking about. You're talking about class, grade, oh, sorry, the average class size? Well, what are we talking about? Reducing the total number of elementaries, five, ready, right, K through four, into four. This is the whole conversation we had last year. Numbers to the right in orange concern me the most, obviously. 29, 29, 28, 28, 29. And that is with no one moving, that's assuming that no one moves in, okay? I, I, what I mean is I'm going to leave it at there, because I, as I said last week, and I'll say it again, I believe that the choice was on the floor last year, and I think that the choice before, not necessarily the community, maybe the communities, is that higher class sizes are higher towns. You decide. There's the information. And so folks will make whatever decision that they're going to make, but that, those are the numbers that I have currently as of December, okay? And I break it down in terms of, you know, residents, et cetera, as we do. Middle school. Middle school, you bring the fifth grade up, you're talking about the, two of the highest, the most number of kids that we have in this, in the district, period. Grade seven, grade six, this is next year's grade seven, okay, right, current six, and in grade five. So, projected number would be 365, we're currently at 373, it's, it's basically a wash. In terms of total number of kids in one, you know, at the middle school level, it's about the same. The grade, the average class sizes are, well, they're static, right, because they're the same now that they were, because we didn't, we just had, we just moved the kids up one grade, okay? And so we see that. High school, move the eighth grade up, I took an, well, this is the, the quota for Monty Tech is 20, so I simply took 20 from the ninth grade. If they take 30 for the waitlist, sure. The way I figured it out, the way I figured it is that, well, then, if we're worried about seats and all of that, then the number would just go down, and this, in that case would be better, you know, it wouldn't be, because, you know, it's, it costs the towns. But anyway, so that's why you see negative, you know, 20, minus 20 Monty Tech students, but you see that the middle school, high school total as of right now, you know, again, I kind of put middle school, high school, 698, be 850, but at the high school itself, the current high school is 325, projected is 465, but they're already there. So it's not like these students are being flown in or moved from another building that don't exist, they literally are here, they're just in classes on one side of the door. So it's not exactly a, you know, you know, an influx of 100 kids, you know, in terms of random kids, okay? So, that's how it would look, so that's hopefully to quell maybe some of the concerns that people have, like, oh my God, it's going to be 200 kids at Templeton Elementary School. No. Oh my God, there's going to be nobody in the middle school, or nobody at the high school. No, the numbers will generally, if no one moves in, the numbers will all be roughly the same at all three levels. School choice. Here's my slide. I've taken away the 20-year, I did 20 years up there, it was just ridiculous. I just did the last three, you know, fiscally years. So, it stayed pre-stated, 266 was what, it ended up in June, or 242 in December, which is the preliminary, doesn't become actual until June, right? Kids come and go and do this or whatever, mostly they'll leave because we didn't take any in, no, didn't take any school choice children in. The biggest, the biggest surprise, and by the way, it's a good surprise, is that the number of school choice students out dropped a, by a lot. And, you know, you know this, I would love to take credit for that, but I can't, that is a direct correlation and reflection of the teachers in this district. People aren't going to move to a better place, move to another place when they're probably in one of the best districts around. So, the fact of the matter is that they went from, we went from 155 kids to preliminarily 122. Will that number go up? Probably. We know that some kids have, you know, gone or this and that, we'll see in the end, but still, that is, that is a great, that's a, that's a great stat. And so our pupil differential is 120 between coming and going. And so, you know, when we start talking about monies, we go, well, how is your difference or your net $730,000? It's more than it was last year, you're taking in less. It's because less kids are leaving, all right? The differential is higher, okay? Well, then we should have $730,000 just to spread around. No, we already have $1.4 million in operating costs coming out of school choice, which shouldn't be there. We know this, right? These are all things that we've already discussed, right? So, you're right, if we had $730,000 burping a hole in our pocket, you know, you could do one-time, you know, one-time fixes or do whatever, but it's not how it goes, because there is school choice revolving. And so, you know, we have eight teaching positions in there currently. All of our PD, our huge, I think our largest number and most concerning number is health insurance. Health insurance goes up by four and five and six percent. Staff raises generally only go up two and three. So, keeping that amount of money in there is just going to, it's just, that's my, that's one of my, of course, our largest concerns. So, we generally take in 1.4 million overall, and we spend 1.4 million to go on. So, keeping an eye, move fairly quickly, a lot of this information is really kind of old news, I hate to say it that way, but it's true. So, our recommendation, at this point in time, to the committee, is to reorganize the district in the following ways. We assign all K through four elementary students to Templeton Elementary School, reassign all fifth graders back up here to the middle school, high school complex, reassign the eighth grade to the high school, and cut the number of staff positions that were listed eight or nine slides back.
Questions, comments from the committee? Well, thank you for putting together the information and this presentation to encapsulate the recommendations. I think we heard from the community last week and today, obviously this has an impact on, on both communities, but obviously one with the school that may not, may or may not have students in it next year, depending on how we go. Personally, I get concerned when I start seeing even these numbers at a 2, 2.55% increase, because is that even sustainable going forward? Which is really not even something that we've even had a chance, we're still trying to make it through this year, never mind think ahead, which is something we, we need to get to, we have to get into the cycle of doing that. Personally, I, I think, and I said this last week, that the moment that our $20.3 million budget was voted down on the floor, or at the, yeah, the floor, it would've been on the floor first, really set this stage and these actions and motions for us to have to consider, because fiscally, it's, it's not sustainable, there's no financial way to solve the issue of not having the dollars yet providing an equitable education, so. Any other comments? So, with that being said, with your recommendation, the next thing that we'll need to have is a budget hearing, which we will schedule for February 26th. So we will plan our next budget hearing for February 26th, here in the Kiva. Six o'clock, I think, is when it's been on the schedule form, if I'm not mistaken, and we'll post notice of that hearing in the paper and send a note out to the towns as well, so the communities are aware. We will put on the agenda that evening for potential budget certification, if this committee is, is in a position to do so. If not, we will plan for a meeting, we'll choose the date and time in accordance with whatever we need to do, probably a week later, and we can come back, but that will be what we'll look to do. I know we've continued to want to get to this process earlier, because it allows the towns to then react and share feedback with us. Once we present them that they certified number, they have something to deal with. So, that is the plan, unless anyone has any concerns. Okay? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Kazman, Ms. Geister, and Mrs. Varney for all the support, and everyone else in Central office, I know we, we called on the administrative team to work through this. It's certainly been very well thought out, so, thank you. All right, no other comments, we'll move on to the next item, which is the school committee self-evaluation report. I will send out, like we did the last time we did this, an email with a link to a survey that you can take about how we feel we operate together as a school committee, and we can identify strengths and weaknesses and things that we can work on. So I will get that email sent out, and we'll probably look to go over results maybe at the, our meeting at the end of March, might be a good timeframe, but we'll schedule that accordingly with other things on the agenda. So be on the alert for that coming up. School committee comments? Any comments from the committee? Seeing none. FY '21 school calendar, it is that time of year to convene the calendar committee.
Yes, next, well, our meeting is tomorrow. We shall see, but we've already, we formally, you know, the committee is formed, we're ready to meet. It, you know, of course, it's yet, your discretion, but obviously, you know, the takeaway is starting before Labor Day, and those type of, you know, those type of things always come up, we'll, you know, we'll meet with the group and present, you know, we'll present to you the, the draft, obviously, to be scrutinized and overrun.
Great. Do teachers prefer starting before Labor Day?
I bet you after this year they will. But no, I, you know, I think when we put out surveys and, we haven't put that survey, we haven't put that survey out, I don't believe, yet, right? It did go out today, I know it was, I know it was soon, so, okay. Well, I'll be able to tell you where we're at, what we're moving forward, so.
I'd be curious too, is, could we start with the students? And, or, and the parents? Because we, you know, and I, I say this a lot, you know, we continue to do things to students, we need to do, and I'd be curious to see, I mean, a parent, as a parent, I liked having that extra, we have to tell you, because we ended late, which now it's looking like we're going to be ending late again, it really helped extend the summer, so it was a nice thing. I don't know if everyone else feels the same. So it'll be interesting to get some feedback.
I have a lot on another end, people saying, this will go take this as a short summer, let's fix it, back it up in one morning, like here, I have other. We'll see.
We'll see, yeah, the survey, the survey went out, so we'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay. All right, so we'll address that at our next meeting, when you have the feedback. Out-of-state field trip, we do need to take a vote, and this is for, I believe, the seventh grade Ferry Beach field trip, that we do need to give approval for, because it is, they go, is it Maine?
Poland.
That we go Poland, Maine. So we do need to approve this excursion out of state. I would entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the seventh grade class to go to the ecology school in Poland, Maine.
Several.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Just a second.
Couple of seconds. Any questions or comments on this? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? So this is now going to prove, fully to hear any about their trip. Surplus items, we carry this in case something comes up, we don't have any surplus items. Just a topic to introduce, the Student Opportunity Act had a provision in it that districts must present a plan of how they're going to use all of this newfound money. So Dr. Kazman needs to start working in earnest on this, luckily a short form, he doesn't have to do the long form, because the long form is only for over a million and a half, or $39,120. We're looking forward to seeing how, over the next three years, he's going to impact the district with that, so.
I have a lot of great ideas.
Yeah, so. But that plan will be brought to the school committee at our, our meeting at the end of March, because it does need to be submitted, I think, online April 1st, but needs to come through us for approval, so we look forward to seeing your short form.
Your hands.
You can tell the.
I'm awash in ideas.
Yeah, yeah. A little sarcastic on that one. Next up is the regional agreement update. We had the Mass Association of Regional Schools come in at the end of January and do a presentation on what the process is to update the regional agreement, they have a really nice presentation on that, and we've, we had some discussion, I think at our last meeting, we've had discussions in long-term planning, and we, I think, the feeling was that we should probably move forward with this activity. In order to do that, though, we have a couple of things that need to happen. We need to have an RFP put out to any potential organizations that could help facilitate the process, and the motion then that we would entertain here as a school committee would be to initiate the review and amending of the regional agreement, and we'd authorize the superintendent to create and issue the RFP to solicit assistance from qualified organizations to facilitate the process.
So moved.
So, I have, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments on this process and getting it started? So I, I'll ask, because it's going, how are we going to pay for this?
Well, you know, you're taking, it's one-way ideas, so now, I'm going to take one off the list. So, well, it'll have to be budgeted. Again, though, in one of our meetings, we talked about, I know that, you know, there, we could petition towns, we could, we, we could pay for it ourselves, I would think that we need to be budgeted. I'm trying to think, I'm ready with the, I mean, really, truthfully, have to, I mean, really, there's no, I mean, other, other than that, you.
School choice.
School choice monies, if there's, you know, again, if we have a couple more kids, you know, we're here, not here, that kind of thing, so there's, without really knowing what the actual, it's hard for me to answer until I see what the cost.
Any idea? Did he say? They didn't say, did they?
No, he didn't.
No.
Dr. Hammond had said he thought it would probably be around $20,000.
And, and in my opinion, worth every penny, I'm hearing some of the consultant proof that have done, and the level of effort, so. Okay, so we look forward to you pushing for the RFP and presenting back to us at our next meeting, whatever we receive back, and we'll move from there. The second piece with the regional agreement was, we had been asked, we have, have really three things out there with the regional agreement. We had been asked by the town of Templeton, they're having issues with the insurance on the building, because the regional agreement does not specifically state Templeton Elementary School. And the insurance carriers are not happy about that, because they won't write a policy because the name isn't right. So that's one of the issues, that they've asked us to see if we could try to come up with a solution to push that forward sooner rather than later, and figure out a way to make that happen. The second that was asked for, and actually would, is, is not, I'd say it's not beneficial to the school committee so much, we're in a position to do it, so it's not a big deal, but it's going to be very beneficial to the towns, is to put a provision in that states we will get our budget in draft form to the towns by February 15th, and a final budget certified by March 15th. And we've pretty much been doing that for the past couple of years. It shouldn't, as I said, it really isn't an issue for us, but it helps the towns with their budgeting process and being able to react. So those were the two things from Templeton. The third thing on the table is an amendment that Phillipsden had passed at their special town meeting last year that was recently presented to Dr. Kazman, and according to the way the regional agreement's worded, the towns vote on it, and then it would go back to the towns for voting. What needs to be identified with, to make sure that we do things properly, is what of those three things are we able to try to handle outside of a full, open, you know, full regional agreement amendment committee? What will the Department of Ed entertain? They really don't want us doing one-off things without addressing the entire agreement at a time. So, what I've asked this committee to do is motion that we can allow Dr. Kazman to work with whoever he needs to, to come up and find out what we might be able to do and how we would do it, to take one, two, three of those things, we're done if we're told we can't do any, and come back to the committee to hopefully be able to act on one, two, or three of them at least, so that we can handle some of these issues that we're up against the clock on. And that, that insurance one is obviously a big concern. So I would. So I would look for the committee to motion that we push that forward and allow Dr. Kazivan to work on that and then report back to the committee.
So moved.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments from the committee on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so Dr. Kazivan, if you wouldn't mind leading that charge, I believe you already have some ideas on how we might make things work, but there's got to be some conversations. Thank you. Next thing up is foster care transportation reimbursement. So I will, I'm going to read the motion that we would need to take first, and then I will have Ms. Geister provide a little more background, as much as she knows. So what we would need to do is we need to motion to approve entering into a memorandum understanding, or an MOU, with the Department of Children and Families, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in order to obtain federal title 4E reimbursements for foster care transportation and to provide that payment for such foster care transportation under such MOUs may be made from such reimbursements as a result of the foster care transportation being performed without appropriation of said reimbursements pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 70. So that is the motion that I would entertain. I would take a motion now, we can second it, and then Ms. Geister can explain a little more, then we can have questions.
So moved.
So I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. So Ms. Geister, I will allow you to give a little more background.
So the state is offering that they're going to try and set some money aside to reimburse for the foster transportation. This first round, they're only looking at expenses from last April to June. It's not a lot of dollars for Narragansett, but by signing the memorandum of agreement, it could be more dollars in the future. They just changed the way we have to report that last year, so this year versus last year, already, we've spent more this year than last year, so if this is something they're going to keep looking at as a reimbursement stream, I think we're crazy not to jump on and get whatever we can out of it.
Do you have any, any idea like what, are we talking like $2,000 or $20,000?
Probably, probably, because the maximum that, like, we spent $20,000 last year for the whole year. They're only looking at April, May, and June, which is probably not even half of that. And then you have to look at those kids that you transported and anyone that you transported that has an IP is excluded, because they can be carried out and reimbursed, looking at through circuit breaker. So it's probably not a large dollar amount to us, but it might be something more than we had.
Any, any, any other questions on this? And I know that there was something that we actually have to vote this in before, was it March 30th or April 1st?
Yeah.
To be eligible, so we really needed to do this vote this evening. So no one has any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I apologize, I've read the whole thing. Are there any pitfalls, anything, any downsides to it at all?
No.
Nothing?
We're probably not going to get much, but if they're going to continue this program down the road and things keep trending the way they are, maybe we'll get more for those kids that we're transporting.
It won't be locking us into something that we'll regret later on.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So the motion carries unanimously, and I don't remember whose signature needs to be on it. Is it, do I have you just on it?
Yes.
Next up is the bus contract. I will turn this over to Ms. Geister, and I'm going to upfront say thank you for all the work that we know you have put into looking at the buses and, and please share with us what you have come up with and your recommendation.
So, this is a first for us. We actually had three companies.
Oh, wow.
Put in bids. For the past two times that we've done it, we have only had one bid submission, which was always for a student. So this time around, we had first student with a five-year total bid of $4,785,806.88. We had NRT Transportation with a bid price for the five years of $4,150,800. And our third company was JP McCarthy and Sons out of North Brookfield, which is a local company. Their five-year bid price was $3,990,600. And let me just say something about that company. When we ran into trouble in the fall because there was not enough drivers for the buses and we had to cancel a lot of our buses at 2:00 for a 3:00 game, I called JP McCarthy and they bailed us out several times by providing transportation, so the kids could still get where they're going. So, being the lowest bidder and local in the fact that they've helped us out, I would recommend that you award the contract to them.
Okay, so, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the busing contract with JP McCarthy for the term of five years at the cost as outlined in the contract with JP McCarthy, which is attached to, as everyone can view. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments on the busing contract?
Does it take into account our new transportation, closing the building and moving them up to TC? The bus.
That transportation won't change from what we're doing, because we have two buses right now. That transport, Philpston kids, it would be the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So we have voted favorably to sign that contract with JP McCarthy as our busing company. And again, thank you for your work on that, and it's exciting, actually, to have three bids.
Some nice, yeah.
Which is, I think every other district is going to be jealous that we had three bids, so, thank you. And thank you for getting out there early with this, too, because this, other districts are coming up. Yeah. Okay, next up on the agenda is other items not reasonably anticipated for eight hours. We don't have any of those. I will turn it over to Dr. Kazivan for the superintendent report and some other items that he has that he'll bring up for discussion.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are two things that really kind of, they are like, so, I'll start with co-op sports. We, John Berry, athletic director, spoke with our friends to the north, Winch and, to look at some, some opportunities in terms of co-op in terms of sports. And both, both ADs feel that boys and girls soccer would be an excellent choice at this point. Our numbers in both are very low. Neither, neither district has an ability to have a JV program to build skills, and we have very, very young players. So, again, we, we partnered with Winch and a lot, and it made sense, and so that would be, you know, obviously, you know, moving forward. We would be the host in this, in this arrangement. Looking forward, you know, we are thinking about things like indoor track for the fall, pardon me, the winter season, I can think about that for a minute. And, but we'll, again, it's really kind of a process in looking at numbers. So we're, we're trying to, again, there'll be a sharing of costs, of course, in transportation, we'll work that out, but we, we co-op already in hockey, wrestling.
Swimming.
Swimming. I think that's it for right now, at this minute. Oh, in the band, in the band. So we, you know, we, we've done this before, and certainly, it makes, it makes sense and will financially, and just in terms of just offering as much as we can, numbers being low.
So do we need to vote?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve the co-op sports arrangement as just presented by Dr. Kazivan, which would be in the fall for boys and girls soccer with Narragansett as the host team, and the athletic directors and administration worked out all of the details, but we need to give the permission, so I'd entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
And I have a motion, and I have a second. Any questions for Dr. Kazivan on that?
So it's just soccer right now?
Yeah, I have a question. How does the, with the new, the new reorg with the eighth grade and the high school and all that stuff, how does that affect the varsity versus, you know?
We won't have to waiver. So now, when we do JV, I'll use JV for the most part, but now we have to apply for a waiver for eighth graders to play any of the varsity sports. If you're on the same principle, under the umbrella of the high school, no waivers needed. In terms of how this will work, I don't, I mean, I don't know. There, they have a combined school as well, so our JV could very well be either, I don't know. I don't know what the numbers are.
But the, but the JV would go by the grade, not the, not whether it's high school, you know, how does that work?
It's whatever the, it's whatever the high school is.
It is.
So, you know, if you don't have enough ninth graders, for example, for JV, then that needs to be worked out. I know that, I know that Murdoch actually had seventh graders playing on their varsity, they just do not have the numbers, and a couple of years ago, we were almost in the same boat, we had no JV, and just enough, just to play. So the numbers are low enough where I think there'll be plenty of opportunity to, you know, to expand accordingly.
Do you think we'll have a JV if we combine?
Well, we don't know, so we'll have to do a sign-up, right? I mean, I guess that's really the next step. I would like to think that, I would hope so, let's put it that way. Let's, let's hope so, because that's, that's the best way to, to build a program in either, in any sense.
And it's my understanding that the MIAA has to approve this as well, so us voting favorably, the.
Allows the ADs to say, hey, can, you know.
And Murdoch will do the same thing, they'll take a vote, and then they present it to the MIAA, who will give their blessing of us combining and consolidating. So, any other questions or comments or concerns? So seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So motion carries?
Keeping on sports and, in a way, in connection with our, our presentation, unified sports. So unified sports is an opportunity for typical peers and children, pardon, students with special needs, to, to engage in an athletic opportunity together, okay? So this currently, right now, Gardner, Ash West, Quabin, and beyond, have unified sports programs. For the fall season, it's basketball. For the winter season, I think there's a couple, but I know that just my son was on the Unified Bocce team. So, but what it does is, you know, it, it's a commitment from the district. It, it, there's, you have to have a coach. This is, you know, you have to have, you know, obviously a coach. There are, this transportation, you know, these are not a lot of games, again, and you stay, you stay very local. It's not like you're going out to Westboro, but you could, you could, right? So, so what I'm asking is for the committee to, we, we received the presentation from Special Olympics, they came out. We know that we have, we know that we have the support of our student body, for sure. I know that we would have to, you know, engage in conversations about what this approach would look like, what's, you know, salary, those things. But what I'm asking for the committee to do is, is to vote, in essence, on the premise of unified sports program, allowing me to move forward and, of course, dig out the information that I, I really need and to, to price, you know, basically price it out. This is a great opportunity for all, for all involved in this. It's a wonderful community event at this bar.
With that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the creation of unified sports teams with the appropriate supports as presented by Dr. Kazivan, who will then come back to the committee. Obviously, we'll have a coaching position that we'd have to approve, because it'd be stipend, and all of those things that we will vote on at the time when, when that's fleshed out.
So moved.
And I do have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions or comments or concerns from the committee? I would just like to say, I think this is a, an awesome opportunity for, and for our students. What, what grade levels would the support?
It's high school.
It's high school, okay.
It's high school level. And, you know, again, sports can vary depending on, you know, what you can offer, but basketball is, is really the big, is the big draw. And if you probably looked at Facebook, you saw, you know, Ash West played Gardner a few times, and it's, it's a great event.
So just, so does the coach, coach for all the different sports, so with basketball or?
You know, we'd have to talk about what that would look like. I, I think that right now, we're just looking at basketball for right now, see about, you know, you know, basketball, then we get into the big sports like Bocce. So, yeah, I'm just saying, it's hardly.
I sense I'm anticipating that.
I'm going to tell you, we just have to do a lot of Bocce. But anyway, but I'd rather just take it slow. I think that most, you know, most of the time, it's one coach, it's generally someone in the specialty section, just in general, but it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be. We'd have to, I'd like to, you know, get to that.
Any other questions? All right, so I had a motion on the floor to approve the creation of unified sports teams, and Dr. Kazivan set on a path to figure it all out and come back to us, but then he needs it, we need to vote on. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That was unanimous, thank you, and I look forward to hearing what we, what we come up with. This is a great opportunity for the district.
So some good news. Rural school aid, you know, shameless plug for Senator Abe Goby, during the budget season, the state budget, I think at that one point, there were four or five districts that she pushed through to receive rural aid, and we were, in fact, one of them. So just a shout-out to Senator Goby. But we recently received a letter that awarded us $72,572 in relief. As a matter of fact, almost three days later, this guy's to receive $39,000. Interestingly, we didn't know how to spend it, or what we could spend it on. The letter is clear, it can be added into the chapter, so you just can't go, oh, look at this, $70,000, now we're buying a, whatever. It, it, the letter's clear that you have to engage in some type of activity to build a regional, a regional connection. It doesn't, doesn't mean that you're regionalizing with anyone or to that effect, but again, this would be a great opportunity if we're talking about transportation here or there, maybe with the dual enrollment program, you know, transportation, maybe it's a work program, you're working with athletes. You could work with other, I need to literally call the state to get, to get some, I have a lot of ideas and I have a lot of questions, and I need to flush them out, because you had another report needs to be written there of how you're going to spend this money over the next three years, which seems to be a thing in the state. But the fact of the matter is, it's, it's money available that we can utilize in a manner to enhance services, utilizing, you know, our regional, you know, our friends regionally, staffing, et cetera, but I need to get some clarity on exactly, because they gave some exemplars and some questions about. So that's just to let you know that, that we did receive it, we received the letter. There's more, as soon as I get more information and some clarity, because in the very end of the letter, they said, well, you don't have to do any type of regional, you can do something else. What does that mean? I can't add it to chapter 70, so it's typically, I need to flush it out. But we're going to do that, but hopefully we can enhance something that we're doing or trying to do now. That's, that's just informational thing, I don't have any more than that, but it's good news.
We'll carry this on the, on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes, until the next meeting, until I can get a hold of it.
That's good news, though.
Margaret, I just have a question. Is that something that you applied for, or is it just something that?
No, but we lobbied pretty hard for it, to be very candid, because when we saw the, the criteria that other rural districts were, you know, how they were receiving money, we were speaking, what's it, folks at DESI, actually at DOR, and we're like, we hit that, we fit that criteria. There's no way that we don't fit this criteria, and our friends at DOR, actually, I think, did some, did some looking, because we did fit this people, you know, per mile, square mile type of thing, and then, you know, we, I called Senator Goby, I sent her a message and said, boy, I think we really fit here, and she said, just, you know, basically, just hold on, we're working. So then it got passed, and so Winch and us and a few others were added, and we're very thankful for that. So hopefully we can work together with our, we will, hopefully we have to, we want to utilize this money, so we'll utilize it. So we did a lot of lobbying against that weekend.
There, there was actually a rural schools coalition that started this process and was lobbying mostly from out west, and they were successfully able to get the grant monies put aside, and then that's when this next year, they were using a federal standard for the definition of rural, and it didn't really translate well into the communities, which is what Senator Goby and several others really worked behind the scenes to say. and several others really worked behind the scenes to say, we need to really look at that. And that's how we got added, because they did award the first bunch of grants, but only, and if you click, there is a live link here. It's out on the public agenda, too. You can actually go read, and you can look at the, the spreadsheet of everyone who's getting it and what their demographics look like as far as population per square mile and all this other stuff that factored into, did you, one, qualify? And did you, number two, how much did you qualify for? So.
I just have a question or concern, actually. I'm, I'm a little more concerned with the, the money that they're giving us is, is going to have to be used for something that we have to create. You know, I know you've mentioned something about re-regionalization. Not that we'll have to regionalize, but I don't want to have to get into another situation where we're spending money to spend money. You know what I mean? Like, create another situation, like, kind of like what we tried to do with, you know, getting more school choice kids and to, to, to pay for a kindergarten teacher. And then it didn't work, and it kind of bit us in the butt.
And I think that's why the terms and what they ultimately will give direction. It really needs to be one-time expenses, so that you're not spending something that will end up as part of your baseline, unless you can use them to...
It's a three-year grant, and you, you can talk about, so the example they gave is speech and language. They literally put in a narrative that says, you know, five districts got together and discussed their speech and language needs. Three districts, you know, identified that they would be, that they have a, you know, that they could work together and hire one speech and language person to share, you know, between three districts to provide services. Those type of things is what they gave the exemplar for, as an exemplar. But I, I have some, I have some questions around that, obviously. But what they're trying to do is say, look, if you need something, somebody next door needs something, but both of you can't afford it, here's the money to try to create, you know, the capacity to actually, you know, to do that. So, again, I need, I have some questions, and we need to, I need to ask, I need to be able to ask that in the call today.
Should we, as a committee, consider an initial thank you to Angoby? And I think Whipps was involved in this as well. Just an initial for recognizing the fact that there's such a great need here to the west of where, where everybody stops. Just an initial thing, saying the committee is...
It would be nice, would maybe, to have a letter drafted that we can all sign at our next meeting. I think it'd be a powerful link to come from the entire committee, because how we use the money, obviously, that's, that's going to be key. And, and you know what? You don't have to take the money. That's the other thing. If, if we can't find something that, you know, is recommended as sustainable, then we have to consider that. But I'm feeling we'll be able to. But I, I do, I think I'd thank you, so maybe if you could draft something for us for next, that would be great. Any other?
It would be nice if it would, it could be used for something that we already have and doesn't have to be created. That's, that's kind of where I'm going with it. If, if it's something that it could pay for something that we...
Like speed, sure.
Something that we already have.
That's not what the terms of the grant, it's a grant, basically. They don't call it a grant, but it is a grant.
Okay. So basically, it's something that we have to create and pay for.
I'm here, I'm here, it's reported as a grant, yeah.
It's reported as a grant. But again, that's, that's, we're looking to not probably reinvent the wheel, but we are looking to look at services that we all, you know, need. If there's something that we're currently doing now that we can enhance, that's something that, you know, we're definitely trying to do. It does, it definitely has to be within the realm of working collaboratively with another, with another district.
And I'm sure there are a number of places that that would fill.
Oh, sure, yeah. There's, I have, I have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of...
I don't think you have to invent. It's just a matter of recognizing.
Exactly, yep.
All right, so what else did you have on your list? Were you ready to talk about enrollment, the special ones?
Enrollment, school choice is just really the same.
Kindergarten screen?
So, request came from the elementary. I'm trying to get my actual notes about that.
We got an email.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So kindergarten is, you know, still in the spring. However, they are changing the screening dates. It will be in the spring instead of fall. Before kindergarten, we'll have three days, you know, no school this spring instead of starting later than everyone else in the fall. And this is, when I was speaking with the elementary folks, they really would like to do this because they get the information quicker. And so they have it now, you know, if there are things that they need to know, they get it in the spring rather than in the fall. And then now we're trying to catch up, maybe potentially to services or other, you know, other, other things. So, a lot of districts do this. This is not reinventing. Honestly, this isn't brand new, this, but I think it's, I absolutely agree. And so we're gonna, we're gonna push forward with that. Of course, all the notifications will go out and all those type of things. I mean, we'll do the same type of, hey, we're gonna, and they're still gonna have to do the registration, like, in the fall as well. It'll just be a little bit different, just in case folks just move in early, otherwise. But it won't be like, like it's been.
So, so no dates have been selected yet, so more information to come?
Yes, more information to come. We just want to give you a heads up if you see it posted or discussed, et cetera.
It sounds like it would really benefit the program.
It will.
Knowing ahead of time, especially if resources are required for sports.
Well, that's helpful to us enough. Jeez, that's it.
That was it. All right, thank you. Next up, we have curriculum and instruction. We have the program studies here, just to say, hey, we know that we're gonna need to approve that, probably at our next regular meeting, so that we can let the kids start picking their classes. So we just want to introduce that. Or if you have anything you want to add, as, as of right now, that you've been working on for?
Sure. I've been in contact, of course, with the principal of the high school, as well as some of the teacher leaders who work on the department, about any changes that might take place in the program studies that's on track. They're working on it right now. Of course, with the addition of grade eight that comes to pass, that would have an impact on this as well. They expect to conclude the work in the next couple of weeks and bring it to their school councils on March 5th, so it'll probably come to the school committee after that.
I would just like to request, because I know that we've been discussing this, we really look at the requirements for graduation that each of the classes has to attain, because I know things have changed, and we've talked about, we've instituted our STEM programs, and how do those match up? So I'd be curious to hear, you know, what, what the current requirements are for credits, and maybe what they should be based upon, what our offerings are. And won't that make, make more sense with the resources we have? Anybody have any other thoughts on the program of studies? Take that before they start working it out. And then the next thing was the footsteps to brilliance. We were all asking for an update on that program.
So we did attach something there. So we have previously, I've previously reported data from August 1st to, and it's really unclear how much of this really is from the month of August and how much is from when school starts, so August 1st till November. And then I just did the, these numbers again today, and you can see that in almost every category, students' results more than doubled. So in November, for example, students had read, and this is K1 to 9, so three, I'm not sure. They had read 4,220,693 words. They're now over 8.6 million words. And, you know, a couple of things that stand out. The number of hours they've read have doubled. The number of books they've read has more than doubled. They're, they've written their own books and journals. That's more than doubled. Kindergarten, for example, has read over 4.4 billion words. And grade one has read over 2.2, almost 2.3 million words. So it's just wonderful. It's a great program for them. It's easy for parents to boost their young kids outside of school, some teachers using in the classroom, and so forth. So it's just great. The more we get our kids reading, the better they are at reading, and the better they are at writing.
Thank you.
There's something attached to that, if you don't mind me calling attention to this. If you scroll down, I did a little PDF of the Edvports website. So we worked hard last year on evaluating English programs for the elementary, reading programs for the elementary grades. And at one point, I'm sure you've all seen, my office was full of all different kinds of boxes. Materials, teachers looked at those, they graded them, they had calendar planning, they pulled them apart. They chose to, to pilot, work with publishers, got free materials, they piloted, they developed work, they communicated their policies. I'm not trying to belabor it, but they did a lot of work to choose interreading, which, and ultimately, they chose interreading as appropriate. And interreading is 2020 copyright. So it had no ratings outside of the work that we did. Edvports recently came out with ratings for interreading. And if you look at the, the PDF that's there, maybe one of them you look at is the little upside-down green triangle in almost every category is almost as far as it can be to the positive. They got almost top, like, top, the top scores in all categories, which include text quality, building knowledge, and usability for every grade K through five. So it's just a validation of the hard work the elementary community did, and that we made a good choice. And I think that's great to call attention to.
That's great.
Now, how many other districts do you know implemented interreading?
So we were one of the first. We have a district that has contacted me and asked to come out and, you know, do a little tour, meet with our teachers, maybe see how the program works. So there's starting to be a couple of other districts that are looking at this program. And the publisher has given us some really great support. You know, we want to investigate and see it work. So teachers have had very good embedded training throughout the year to support them in implementation of the program. So it's been really good. But we were, we're not the first, one of the very first in that process. I think we were actually the first.
Thank you for sharing that. Thank you for our report on the curriculum and instruction. And we'll get into some subcommittee reports. Academic administrative, we've really covered everything here that we've discussed in that meeting. Finance, the same thing. Facilities, do we have an update on facilities?
We have, that's the last time we reported.
Okay. Policy, we have a second reading?
Yes, we have a second reading on BEDL, which is remote participation, and BEDL-R, which is the alarm regulations along with that. I'd like to have someone make a motion that we pass these on as new policies.
So moved.
One second. Any questions or comments on these? The only thing that I have is, I guess, Dr. Kazivan, if you can, now that this will go into effect, how will we implement, you know, will there be a telephone line? So just the logistics around making this happen. We're gonna need to push out instructions to the committee. If you do need to remote participate, how you make that happen, because there's certain things you have to follow. But obviously, if we don't have a way to communicate, we can't even do that. So if, we could ask you to...
Yeah, I'll, yeah, certainly, we'll talk to tech about that as...
And, and it could be as minimal as a telephone. Doesn't have to be video, but it can be, so. So I'll make a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So those two policies, BEDL, remote participation policy, BEDL-R, the procedures around it have been approved.
And then we have some policies up for first reading. BEDH is public participation at school committee meetings. And this is updated to clarify the purpose and guidelines relative to public comment at school committee meetings. Revised language notes that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee, but rather an opportunity for individuals to express opinions on issues within the school committee's scope of responsibility. Revised language emphasizes that all speakers are expected to present their remarks in a respectful manner, and the chair of the meeting, after a warning, reserves the right to terminate speech that is not constitutionally protected. So that's up for a first reading. The second one is JB equal educational opportunities, and it's updated language. JBB, educational equity. This actually would be a new policy. I'd like to just read it so that it's, we have it. The school committee's goal is to strive to address the needs of every student in each of our schools, subject to budgetary space and other limitations. Educational equity for the purpose of this policy is defined as providing all students as reasonably practical the high-quality instruction and support they need to reach and exceed a common standard. To achieve educational equity, the district will commit to, number one, systematically, when appropriate, use district-wide and individual-school-level data, disaggregated by race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, national origin, language, special education, socioeconomic status, and mobility to inform district decision-making. Number two, raise the achievement of all students. And three, graduate all students ready to succeed in a diverse local, national, and global community. In order to reach the goal of educational equity as reasonably practical for each and every student, the district shall provide every student with access to high-quality curriculum, support, and other educational resources. Seek to promote educational equity as a priority in professional development. Endeavor to create schools with a welcoming and inclusive culture and environment. Provide multiple pathways to success in order to meet the needs of the diverse student body and actively encourage support and expect high academic achievement for each student. The superintendent shall include equity practices in the district's strategic plan and goal strategies to implement this policy. The superintendent, upon request, will periodically report to the committee the progress of the implementation of this policy. So that is brand new. The next one would be JFABE, and that is educational opportunities for military children. And it's just an update to adapt to reflect the expanded definition of eligible students, which now includes not only children of active-duty personnel, but also children of veterans who have been severely injured and medically discharged, and children of active-duty personnel who dies on active duty. And the last first reading is JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care. This is an update to reflect attendance rights by living in attendance areas. Other student assignment policies or intra- and inter-district choice options that are available to students in foster care on the same terms as families who reside in the district. Accordingly, the district will provide transportation services to school in a manner comparable to the transportation provided for all other students in the district. So I would entertain...
So...
Not me, sorry. I got carried away.
So I would entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the policies. An update to BEDH, the public participation at school committee meetings. An update to JB, equal educational opportunities. The new policy, JBB, educational equity. An update to JFABE, educational opportunities for military children. An update to JFABF, educational opportunities for children in foster care.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns on any of these policies as presented for first reading? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So that passes, and we will take in any comments over the next timeframe and move these for second reading at the next meeting. Long-term planning, I think we addressed through the regional agreement item, so I don't think we have anything additional. Okay. Templeton Elementary Building Committee, any updates? Things are...
No, they're just working through the punch. I don't think there's anything else going on.
Okay, cool. PMS Building Committee?
We have a meeting tomorrow.
Okay. And I know that Jeff was finally appointed as an official member of the committee.
Congratulations.
So that was good news. Move that forward. So we'll look forward to an update at our next meeting. There was no correspondence that I'm aware of that has come in. We have our next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 26th, and we'll... We have our next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, the 26th, and it will include an FY21 budget hearing, and I do have that we would go into executive session, do we need to do that? Is that?
We, we have had two, we've had two meetings since.
Yep, that's, that's fine, I just didn't know if, yeah, okay. So, we need to go into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Litigation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining, we're litigating in a position of the public body, and the chair so declares, the meeting will not return to open session immediately following, and just for the record, it is to discuss, we're partly in negotiations with WUSW. So, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, Ms. Mason?
Aye.
Ms. Snatz?
Aye.
Ms. Posel?
Aye.
Ms. Triple L, Mr. Marks?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes, yes? So we are going into executive session, I thank everybody for coming.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing you at our next meeting, thank you.